So I'll call the meeting to order, the Rockingham Board Meeting to Order at 4:01. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay, if not, we have old business, new business, a student matter and a personnel matter. I believe there's nothing for discussion on a student matter at this time. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at 4:02 to discuss a personnel matter where premature public knowledge could place the board and individuals at a disadvantage with administration invited. James, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Jim McCollum has made the motion to enter into exec session at 4:02 PM to discuss a personnel matter where premature public knowledge could place the board and or individuals at a disadvantage and administration is invited. Is invited. Sorry, maybe 10:15 minutes, we'll call it up guys. Thank you. Chris, how do you?
I vote yes.
Caitlin? Yes, and Jim?
Yes.
Whatever. The next thing on the agenda is a discussion of the fiscal year 24, discussion for proposed expenditure and revenue budgets. Okay, so Jim, your.
Well, I just want to just give you kind of an overview, and I'm looking at page 80. So overall, the increased expenditure budget to expenditure budget is 551,000. Now, when we take revenues, and when I say revenues, you know, the next sheet is page 79. The revenues that you have, we've got $350,000 of unreserved surplus monies that you had asked to put towards offsetting taxes. And the other thing is the tuition. Now, as a placeholder, I put $21,000 per Henry's tuition students from Westminster and Athens Grafton. Now, I don't know what that's going to end up being, but I, that's the placeholder that I'm using. So when we take out those revenues, and again, at some point in time, you'll have interest in miscellaneous revenues from the bank account, you're going to come out with, and I'm looking at in line three. All revenue, yeah, yeah. So you will come out with an increase in, this is 339,000, which will hit the taxes. Now that is the Rockingham piece. In addition to that, you've got the high school piece, which is not finished yet, but in process. Where they are right now is an additional 34,000, and I'm looking at line five below. And that's another, an additional 34,357 dollars. So those two things are what steer your tax rate. And I will say this. Again, I'm just your advisor in finance, Andy's advisor in finance. I think you're done. And the reason I say this, keep in mind, that 300,000 increase, $150,000 of that is the tuition, the prepay tuition that we missed last year. So I mean, take that out, and so you've cut, you've got an increase of, let's say, 200,000. And again, you've had a teacher's contract, which is a new salary schedule, a step increase. You've got support staff increase, and you've got a 12.7% increase in your health insurance. You know, and again, I do think you're, you're operating as closely as you can right now. And again, I certainly hope that you're not going to turn in a different direction, you know, with the supplies or, you know, the other stuff. But I think that we've sifted through, and keep in mind, we've got in here your heating cost increase and all of the rest of the increases in the facilities. So I don't think you're operating too bad. And I will say this. We can't be too smart to think that we know everything with finances because we do not. And if you look at the last page, page 81, okay, so we've got this on the 16th of December. Now, what this means is any federal monies that are expended for salaries in the district that we're paying 26% towards a shortfall in the state retirement system. You know, what that means is, as we expend, ESSER, Title I monies, if we're spending a million, we're writing a check for 250,000 and sending it north to Montpelier. I mean, I think that's incredible. And I just will say this, one person, one Vermonter, I'm offended because Title I, as you know, it's a resource for supporting math, for supporting reading, and it's where you want to be. So I just will say, keep in mind, that's not calculated into your budget anywhere. The shortfall that we're going to have because of those positions, Andy's going to have to pull that rabbit out of his hat somewhere because it's not in your budgets. And I just will say this, in addition to that money, for every new teacher coming into the system, and again, every district, every school district in Vermont has new teachers coming in. 20 years from now, 50% probably will be new in relation to, you know, five years ago. And we're paying $1,500 for each and every new teacher coming into the system. Now, at some point in time, five years, 10 years from now, you're going to be writing a check for 250,000 for those new teachers up to Montpelier. So I just want you to plug that into your calculation, that how close do you want to be? Because I think you're going to be, I think you're going to be operating pretty close. And I mean, it's just, just a fact of life here. What do you think, guys?
Now, where are these numbers hitting? Well, I know the 1,500, you've got those in there.
Those? Well, on the, I just want to say, on the new teachers, they send us an invoice, and we just got it. That money, and I classify it as OPA, Other Pension Benefits. And we had about 100,000 into your budget right now. This other money, for that sheet, is coming right against the federal monies that you receive and expend. So where it makes you sure is if you've got four people.
Yeah.
You might have three.
But this is also, it says, teachers who become members on our active in July 2015. So we've got a whole bunch.
Yes, we've been doing this.
You've got $100,000 right now. It's just saying that because of the population, the the age of our teaching population and how long they've been with us, we're going to see a migration of teachers out of our, you know, they're going to retire. And so therefore, we're going to have even more new teachers coming in, which means that 100,000 that we're paying right now is going to increase in the next five to 10 years, so.
And they perpetuated this, I know I'm in a room with teachers, but they perpetuated this retiring medical benefit for teachers. Makes no sense. I mean, they qualified for Medicare like everybody else. And I think it's just, you know, again, to just have these numbers hit the taxpayers. In addition to everything else, it just, and you know, unfortunately, the legislature doesn't do anything about it.
No, and I will say this, they had an opportunity last year, they had $140 million, they didn't know what to do with. They could have fixed a lot of that.
Well, I mean, the.
And on the other end, we're, we're having conversations with the legislature about incentivizing, how do we bring teachers into our system and, you know, whether it's through loan forgiveness or housing issues or something. So it's like, yeah, like.
That is a big issue.
Well, the other part, you know, looking at our budgets here, when you look at the dollars of increase, not, not the dollars that we decreased in areas, the thing that just is startling is the, is the health insurance. And again, I know the state has taken that over from the local, the locals. And they're doing a wonderful job as far as taxpayers are concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, somebody honest mentioned that to them too, that, you know, you need to do something about healthcare costs.
And Jim, the first year that they went in this direction, they had a, the committee came around to various schools, and I said to them, I said, hey, how much you guys spend in addition because it went with the state contract? And that number was an additional $25 million, no benefit. There was no extra additional benefit, it didn't fix anything other than cost, the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers, an additional $25 million of money. I think that's tragic in a small state like ours, too.
Jim, you said there's still some things too, though, that you're still adjusting.
Yes.
I mean, so they're still, I mean, this is pretty close, but we're still adjusting a little bit.
Right, right.
Now, what would we be adjusting at this stage?
Well, Laura had a couple of items in her budget. They dealt with some software for regular education, and I think there was originally, there was $8,000 in the budget. We should get.
11,000.
11,000? Okay, anyway, she is saying taking four out of that. Four out of that.
Yeah, because that was a lot higher than the other schools way up, and because a lot of our software is being covered under.
Well, that's right. I mean, these others, I mean, Laura's got that room full of book stuff, there's two, and I I don't know, I, I think, you know, we certainly provide the computers for all the kids now. And, you know, again, if this is a system-wide program for children or something, we cover it through ESU. This is a one-off. I'm not so keen on one-offs.
Yeah, well, and that, and that was the conversation I did have with principals was, there are certain ones that, and I'm just talking across all our six schools, so I'm not just like, you know, they have a building has historically used a certain type of software, and it's kind of sometimes been thrown over into IP or not into IP in the various years that I've been here. And so we said, if they are systematic programs that we are using across ESU, then all students are accessing, we migrated that to ESU. But that, there were certain ones, I'm trying to think of one, one was the typing program.
Typing pal.
Not everyone uses it.
Yes, what was typing pal, typing pal?
Not every school uses it, like, so, you know, we need to start taking a real hard look at different things, so.
Yeah, and there obviously can be some things that are absolutely needed. And we just need to know that, but the only reason I was mentioning that was I was understanding that there were still some slight things that needed to be adjusted just a little bit.
And I think what we did, just to clarify, so that, that is line 20 on page 54. And that $8,500 has been reduced $4,000.
It's showing on 43, it's showing as 11,000.
And.
On to page 51, so maybe it just.
54, page 54, it shows.
And that.
11,000.
That may be all. That 11,000 is for all the 5735, which is software licenses. So that's the object sheet line that it has all of the software.
That's, that's supplies, right?
No.
Oh, no.
That's.
Because software subscription is still 5735, and that's, that's what we're given by the ESU, right, for each school?
I, I'm not exactly sure, I, you know, exactly what other subscriptions, but it's.
Laura, Laura's got her hand up, so.
Yeah, Chris does too, but Laura, go ahead, because we're kind of talking about your theory thing, so.
Yeah, I would love to provide some clarity if I could. So the original figure that was in there, if you recall, that was before the principals met with Jim to finalize some lines, and over a break, I had talked with Ricky and also Deb Cardine, just to make sure that some of the subscriptions were being covered under grants, and so that's why there was the decrease. So right now, I'm just asking for 4,000 for the subscriptions that we use in-house that are not covered under the grants. Does that make sense? Does that?
Yeah, so that.
What lines are we talking about on that?
I think, is that 43 on page 51?
No, talking on page 54, we're talking about. All right, well.
Line 20.
Line 20, yes, that's correct, that's correct.
My number down.
The 8,500 on that line is the number I think we got from ESU. I mean, if you check the other schools.
Mine aren't matching.
So if you dig through on other pages, there's object code 5735 in other function areas. And so therefore, you have to add all those up because that one that you're looking at on that first page is by function, so that's, that's smashing them together. So there's, later on, there's, let me see.
Should be 8,500, should be 4,000. It's, yeah, so the 11,000 won't go down quite as much, but it'll go down.
Right.
It'll go down 4,500.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's, the 11,000 isn't down to 4,500, but you're saying it's going to go down, that's from a previous year.
Yes.
You say it's going to go down another?
That 11,000 on line 20, which is 85, is going to go down to 4,000.
Over to line 20.
Line 20 on page 54.
It's going to go down to 4,000.
Yeah.
And so that will then drop with 11,000.
Yes.
On the first page by 4,500.
Down, what was that kind of?
Correct, that's correct.
And maybe, and maybe some of, you said maybe a couple other things too, so, but we're getting really close.
Yes, I think they are.
Thank you, Laura. Chris, you had your hand up.
Yeah. Excuse me. So going back to the audit, we presume we're going to have that soon, right? And in theory, we could actually apply, if there's, we're anticipating a surplus, we could apply some of that to next year as well, right, in the articles? So we could actually reduce the amount that's, the tax increase down to zero or something, whatever makes sense, but the 339 increase could be offset by applying a part of a surplus.
Right.
In addition to what's already been applied by previous years, it's just the taxpayers have to vote yes on it. So you have to put that ahead in the art, of the budget article, you have to put that ahead of that, and then if it passes, then.
Okay, so when can we expect?
I called her maybe four times to push and say, look, we need a date, a specific date of when you will be finished. And she says, I'm working diligently on yours, and she says, I can't give you an exact date, but I understand that you want and desire it to be as soon as possible.
So we did some researching in the office, that the target date that we typically got in the audit that is projected, the audit projection date is 1/15. So so I mean, when we went back years and looked at it, that's the date that's projected. And if it comes in early, that's great, and sometimes, as we know, last year came in later, so.
Last year came in late, and we said that, you know, we sure we wanted it a lot earlier, and we thought we were getting it early.
I think what happened this year too is they ran into so many journal entries that had to adjust fiscal year 22. They spent the first four months to two accounts doing those journal entries.
Yeah, just finalizing, like as Chris was pointing out, some of those things, finalizing at this point is kind of really contingent on our getting that, and needs to be, you know. I know last year they did meet with us earlier to talk about it a couple times, and we haven't. We're expecting their time to get this finished, but on the other hand, they need to realize that we're under a time crunch too at this point, so we absolutely have to have this.
Yes.
Well, I think that I think that message has been passed on pretty effectively, and I think the, if we don't have it, then we're going to have to go with what we've got. I mean, that's, and I think, I think what Jim has said is that, all things considered, it's not too bad, because, you know, there were, in addition to the missing the 150,000 of preschool tuitions, we forgot little things like the sports program in the middle school. We forgot the, well, I don't know if the nurse got dropped in the budget process or whether, I don't think we had the nurse in there last year. I, I mean, when I looked at the object code there, I was talking about that, we, you know, one of the big impacts on Central is the psychological service that we're, that we're being required to. Yeah, under health services, we show going from 70,000 to 101,000. At the middle school, I think part of that is the fact that we traded nurses and there, it costs us a lot to make that trade.
And, and.
So we didn't forget.
The health insurance was.
Health insurance, yeah.
Well, yeah, we got hit with, you know.
No, 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 meaning the previous nurse didn't take health.
No, we didn't know that when we made the trade.
Right, right.
With Westminster, so there. But so I think, you know, I think when you look at some of these increases, like I said, in the health insurance cost, it gets staggering to see it.
I haven't seen that health insurance increase that much in 13 years.
And then, and then we have, in this run of the budget, we have adjusted for the the higher fuel costs. That's, it's had a bigger impact on some schools, I think Central took a good shot. One of the things that you had mentioned is you've done some cost per pupil by schools in the different.
Yeah.
Do you have that information?
I don't have the exact, but.
I think it's kind of interesting to, you know, I mean, I don't need to be comparing it to other towns, but I think just within our three schools to have a field for that.
The middle school, so it's divided up as an elementary for the fifth and sixth. And then there's a secondary tuition for the seventh and eighth. And it's interesting because, you know, it's divided out, and it's the students, number of students that drives that. And right now, the proposed tuition for next year is at the 21,000 for each level. And it's, it's odd to have it tracked that closely, but it does. And we have included debt service into that tuition figure as well. And the one thing that does not go into the tuition figure is other tuitions that you're paying outside. And you know, just the high school has tuitions for the vocational, those are pulled out. If there's any tuitions, if you have, you know, any, you don't have it because it's in ESU, but but if it was special ed tuitions that are out there for other schools, or if if there was a decision to put a, place a student in another, you know, school facility to help them, that would be pulled out as well, so. But it's interesting that, you know, Athens Grafton is at a $39,000 level based on student cost. And Central and Saxons are down, you know, in the 21, 22, 26,000 area, so. And I put the question as Rachel Stanger, I'm not sure, what do we use for an elementary tuition? Because there's only a space on the form for one. Do I give them the highest? I don't know, but she hasn't, hasn't sent it back yet.
That's a good question, because we need to get that figured out as well.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. I have no else we can do tonight.
The one thing that is going to, you know, also affect your tax rate is the high school. And again, the high school's not settled as well. And if you look at at that second to the last page, page 80, you'll see on what line it is.
5.
Yeah, 5. So you'll see that right now our portion, and again, this is, we know what the, we know what amounts of the high school budget that Rockingham will pay, block. But we don't know how much that budget is going to be. Once we do, we'll have that percentage as well to crank in there. Currently at 34,000.
That's progress.
Yeah, the two things that, that affect that tax rate. The two things that, that affect that tax rate greatly is the equalized pupils, and you're down twenty-five students. And again, what that does is it drives that tax rate up. And then the CLA, the Common Level of Appraisal, which equates properties to be equalized throughout the state. And again, you're down seven point seven nine percent. And again, that drives the tax rate up. And I think people are stunned when they see the actual cost for that CLA.
I, it's hard for me to, to relate to that number. Because, you know, at ninety-two last year.
Yep.
I thought that was low. Even what was happening to, you know, the real estate department. So it's
You're right.
And now it's gone down lower.
Yep, a, as most of the state has. And it's interesting, I, I wanna say, I I was talking to Cardy today, and I think I thought he said there was like a hundred and sixty-five pounds that have to have reevaluation. Now, sounds like a small number. But there's a small number of appraisal companies that come in and do reappraisals. I, I mean, you could be three years out before you get your reappraisal done. I, I just think that's a, it's gonna be an issue.
Because I give you a yes, plus or minus ten percent.
There, there's a, a range that you, if you fall outside of and reappraisals are not cheap either.
No. What line was that common?
That is line nine.
It's on page eighty. Number nine.
And our equalized pupils are down.
Yes.
And we, we knew that going in, like, you know, we're on a downward trajectory that, with the piece is how do we increase, you know, student population, because, you know, and it gets in that whole cyclical thing of housing and
Yes.
job market and childcare and, you know, and, I mean, it's, you know. Working with the town, see how can we contribute to that, because obviously, we want more students to come in, more students is gonna be, is gonna increase our equalized people, and ours is gonna increase. It's gonna increase spending, but it's also, you know, we, we're at a point where we can absorb, I think, a little bit. You know, it'd be nice to have a cheaper meal then.
On, on the tax sheet, I wanna say line thirteen, Homestead Educational Tax Credit. So there are credits that are, that are given out, you know, the, the town will give them out, the state will crank them through, I don't know what that's gonna be, I had to lose last year's number, haven't received anything as yet.
It was, and it was down last year from the year before, so.
Yeah. But that's something that most likely will change. And, and the grant list, I've kept the same. You know, hopefully you'll, you'll have some increase in the grant list.
Yeah, and all of these things that impact our bottom line, so.
Yes.
These are traditionally things that we get late, to fairly late and close to our deadlines, so.
You're, you're absolutely right, I mean, it's unfortunate, because the yields, which we'll get probably in April, I mean, it's too late. It's not gonna help us even if it drops the tax rate.
Yeah.
So, so you're guessing somewhat with what information we have.
One thing I think that's important to, will be important for our taxpayers to know is line thirty-six, which is only showing a one point two percent increase.
Right.
Which, you know, we've been really working really hard to keep costs down and be very aware of their feelings and what we've been doing for them, as well as trying to provide a really good school for our principals and to be able to run and be able to educate our children.
It's certainly an indicator that you're probably in a better position than many districts in Vermont, because as I said, that they develop these yields and tack current tax rates based on what most people were increasing, and that the, the increase that most people average was eight point five percent. And so, I, I think
Oh, is there anything else that we can do tonight to? Or do we need to wait for one more run of this and see what we're
I don't see it changing much. And as I say, what would you have to also plug in is the stuff that we don't know that could go against us, and it just, I, I think you're, you're close. And that doesn't mean you can't set a figure, you know, where you think you wanna be, but, but I think you're close to where you you have that bottom line where you can say, well, you know, maybe we'll have a few bucks, maybe we'll be a few bucks short. But just think it's, it's not an exact science, and you'll notice this year there's no pennies that show up in your budget, because
You dropped it.
This is not, I mean, this is, this is a roadmap for where you wanna be. And that's all it is. Sometimes it's a rough road. So.
I think, you know, I, I think, you know, anybody that's listening in, and there aren't many listening in, but I think you know, when you, when you look at everything, and you analyze everything, what comes down to the griddle in terms of this board is how many people we employ. I mean, everything is driven from that, the features contracts are set by the negotiations, which are difficult always. The state sets the health insurance rates. They set the reimbursement rates for our damaged kids or our struggling kids and stuff like that, so it's really and truly, it's providing a a good education, an excellent education for our kids, and trying to do it with the fewest number of people possible in getting the job done, and you know, I think we, we've held the line, I think we have one well, no, we've held the line, basically, I think the we, we had some, we dropped some people, and inadvertently, we, I think we've got everybody back in that's supposed to be in. Right, and
Yeah, there's no new personnel in this.
No.
And the principals have been very favorable with the supply lines that we're looking at, and trying to keep it as level as possible, yeah.
So, do you want to let you adjust those things and bring it back to us next meeting?
I think we got time, do we have time the next meeting to approve it?
We, we do have time, I mean.
Hopefully we'll have the audit.
We should start to get, yeah, the articles drafted as well, those are gonna have to be approved sometime this month, too.
Yeah.
But we need the, we need the audit for some of that, and we need the exact figures that we're putting in.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we did some, we'll start working on some graphs without, without numbers in them, and and just get them, you know, so you guys can look at them and be ready, so we're not spending a lot of time wordsmithing them, because I think that'll my, my memory is last year against the
And could you, for the next, for the next meeting, could you bring the how we've allocated prior year's surplus?
Yes.
Both in terms of the capital reserve fund and, I think we set up another fund.
Yeah.
We said, we put a hundred thousand aside for property, to purchase property nearby and stuff like that, and
And then the capital fund, and then, of course, we went out two or three more years.
Right, I have them all written down, I don't have them with me tonight, but I do have them all.
But I think it'd be helpful as we look at this past year's surplus, or how we how we allocated.
We split it out for ways, because there was, there was so much in that particular budget, and then our budget, I think, this last year was much more conservative and much more on track, so, but we need to see what bottom line is on that, so. And if we don't have the total audit, we still need to know you know, what, what they are working with as far as the figures and that.
And, and I will say this. One, one way, I hope to have the final number, but one way you can certainly look at it is if you say up to, you know, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to go towards tax reduction. And I mean, you, you can say up to, and it gives you the ability, if you only have ten thousand, that's it. So it gives you some flexibility.
So that's a good idea.
And I think you'll have, you'll have a perimeter, you don't
Yes. We will.
I think you, you have a fairly close estimate even right now, Jim, so I think
Yeah.
you know, our next meeting, if they, we don't have them, and hopefully we have the official audit, because
I'll make the call tomorrow.
Is right after, right after fifteen, so if you're telling us it's been the fifteenth in the past, I, I think we, we should be able to expect that.
Sure.
Tell them that's kind of our expectation, and we appreciate all their work.
With Sam, send it, send me up there.
Yeah. We appreciate the fact they're done working on, and working hard on it, just if they provide information that's wonderful.
The ESU surplus. How do we, how does, how does that give you?
When we know the ESU surplus, it will have to go in next year as a reduction. And I think you have to, I believe that you have to reduce the assessments. And I, I just don't, unless the board, unless the ESU board has some designation, I don't know what that would be, but
They can't carry it.
Yeah.
But it has to go back to the district.
In perspective, this, will it affect this?
Not this, not this annual meeting, but the following, the following.
Okay, because they can, they cannot carry anything else, or so it has to come back to us, and must come back to the one student.
Right.
If it's not it's not designated a specific time, and it has to go into that, that budget, so that it should be clear. And we should know. They'll have that, you'll have that for us as well, so we'll have that, no, it's okay. So, no.
No, and I will say I've asked asked Samantha to prepare a, a short summary page. Because now, my experience is that when people get the audit report and you've got a hundred and eighty-five pages, it's not always productive time. And again, I wanna get to the right information and make sure that you, the board, have the right, correct information and facts to utilize. And I think sometimes a one page you're showing what the balances are, what his fund balance is, and what the other funds that you have, what those are. It's a little bit more pertinent or information, so I, I just will say, I mean, that doesn't stop you from going through the hundred and eighty-five pages, certainly, and reading through.
There, there were several pages in there last year that were providing quick summaries that, that allowed us to look at those, and those were very helpful.
Good. It's the way they do it.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not seeing anything else that we can actually do tonight, unless someone else something, unless either of the, any of the principals have anything else they don't want that. Okay, all right, then I guess I would actually add a motion to adjourn.
Can we set the next meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, so the next meeting is set on your swing, didn't we? Um, we're looking at January seventeenth at five thirty. That would be our regular meeting, um, the only problem with that is that's a holiday then.
No, the sixteenth is the holiday.
Sixteenth is the holiday, right.
That's Martin Luther King Junior Day, so.
On Sunday?
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday the seventeenth.
So Monday, Monday is Monday the sixteenth.
Our regular meeting would be the sixteenth, so it was the seventeenth, okay.
So it's a special meeting.
So it's a special meeting, exactly, thank you, Chris. Again, we would have a special meeting.
I said you can change the time, too, isn't it?
We want to change the time for next time as well. Would four o'clock work for everybody next time? Would that be better? That provides better travel time for Candy and Jim.
I, I, I know, you know, it's just tight for like Laura, but I mean, I think we can either squeeze her out a little, just because she's got dismissal and whatnot, it's just understanding that, maybe she might be a little bit, or something like that.
Yeah, that's okay.
Watching her consume, and so.
Does it interfere, does it interfere with after-school programs or anything like that?
Does it, yeah, does it interfere with any of your after-school programs?
No, there's not, no, there'll be kids around, but basketball, no, no, nope.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone? Is, is Laura, is that workable for you?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, Chris.
Yep.
And Kate, what?
Yes, I can usually
For four o'clock. Oh, yeah.
All right, so we'll set the next one at four instead also. Because it's, it's already a special meeting, so.
Yeah, you'll need to, just to note, you, you'll need to get the, like, the agenda and the motions just right before that, because you're not supposed to be adjusting agendas for special meetings, so. And this one's kind of important, because we're gonna approve the budget and approve articles, so.
And it is important. And it, it's, it's kind of unusual for both of our meetings in January to end up on, on a a holiday day, so accommodating principals and accommodating personnel is important, so I think that's
Thank you.
Something that's definitely, okay, so the next meeting will be general, a special meeting on January seventeenth at four P M. Okay, so I will, I will adjourn the meeting unless there is any objection. Okay, so we're adjourned at four fifty-nine.